Order, Ms. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Voter. Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Coe.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Here.
Ms. Paulstein.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
All right, so let's. After the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands where my nation stands in the universal.
Yes, for all. All right, so in front of you, you have the meeting minutes from January 20th, 2022. Please view them for deletions, additions, corrections.
Public comments, public comments.
Oh, man. We don't ever have those, I'm sorry. Hasn't anybody signed up to speak before?
Yes, we do have three signers this evening.
Three signers, holy moly.
The first is Gary Doherty.
Yes, Gary Doherty, I just wanted to stop by and say hi. I'm running for county board District 9. And just let you guys know that I'm available with any questions. I'll be here after the meeting for any questions or during, whatever. I don't take up a lot of time. And I'm just here for you, I want to find out a little bit more about how we on the county board will be able to help answer. So appreciate the time. Good meeting, not meeting, y'all. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Science, who's next?
Uh, Andy Potts.
I must have signed on the wrong line.
Well, say hello.
Nothing to say except thank you for all you do. And this is my son, Adam Potts here. He, actually, my other son, Aaron, we're gonna be here in two weeks. And also, Adam has an EVO project coming up, so maybe in the next month or two, he will hopefully be able to present some ideas on it.
Oh, I'm welcome, guys. You're in a good show. You picked a good night because it's not a very big agenda. All right, Ms. Science.
Adam is the next, are you speaking?
Oh, no, he's on the list, he's gotta say something.
No pressure. Um, the next speaker is Dr. Ryan Foster.
Hi, guys, I was here last week, I think, looking for a variance for the window clings that we have. And hope you guys send it through for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now back to the meeting minutes already presented. Does anyone have any additions or changes to the minutes as they are presented to you? During that, I will entertain motion to approve the minutes as they are presented.
Uh huh.
All right. Questions or comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. this voter?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
All right.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paulstein. Hi.
We good?
Yeah.
All right.
Motion, yes, bad, one answer.
I thought you were gonna take it back.
No.
Mr. Hedges. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, first, I'd like to tell you that Mr. Schuster is online with us tonight. Since we have such a short agenda, he will not be with us tonight because we're at such a short. And with that, I would like to ask for the you to entertain a motion to approve an updated 2022 meeting schedule for the village trustee that is August 4th, 2022. Linda, would you like to explain this?
Okay, what happened was that we took August 4th out because of Cool Creek. Because there are some people who are working on Cool Creek and won. Now that they have postponed it until the end of August, they now have a meeting on August 4th.
Who else is as excited about that as I am?
So did I make a motion?
No, you know, we don't have to approve this, I'm just saying. So I will entertain a motion to approve the amended board meeting calendar.
So move.
Check.
Questions or comments?
Can I just make one comment, just so that the board knows, the new date, in case you didn't see it, for Cool Creek is August 25th through the 28th. Just to get it on your calendars now.
So we can still have our PR committee meeting.
We'll be setting up that then.
Okay.
You can have it down there.
Yeah. There you go. Well, holding electrical bolts.
I don't know how much more public relations you can get than set up for a house.
Well, hey.
All right, okay, Ms. Clerk?
Ms. Voter.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Guy.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paulstein.
Hi.
Five eyes, one answer.
Okay, Mr. Hedges.
Thank you, we now appreciate your consideration of an ordinance for varying the requirements of the village community graphics regulations for a window sign for the property located at 184 South State Street, known as Cairo Plus. And you have the doctor with us today, if you have any questions, as well as the mentioned, uh, plan commissioner person. And I distributed for you all the minutes to that meeting because they were not available.
Does anyone have any questions or any discussion about the proposed variance? Again, Mr. Rock is here, chairman of the planning and zoning commission. Sometimes on the bigger projects, he's willing to give, and I, well, I should say this, he's always willing to give a 30,000-foot overview, but I don't necessarily know that that's a necessary thing for a project like this.
You do have an agenda supplement before you prepare and what staff recommendations to approve.
I do have one question and stuff, maybe Mr. Rock. It said that the police safety was one issue, what was the second one? Because I think our chief responded that he was fine with it, so what was the second issue?
Second safety issue, I'm not sure I recall a second safety.
Okay, so it was just one?
The primary discussion was just about visibility into the business during evening hours if there were, you know, uh, evildoers in the facility. Whether the police would be able to actually shine a flashlight into the building.
Okay, okay, so that is really the only thing that was discussed that was a negative?
That I recall at the moment, I do apologize, I don't have the minutes with me either myself. But generally, that was the primary topic of discussion. The visual look and appeal of, you know, the vision, the vision of the stickers themselves. That was a discussion as well.
Thank you, thank you.
If I may, if I may. It wasn't a negative, it was just a discussion. The actual thing is the window clings are perforated, so they are visible at night with the lights on. You can see through. So it wasn't a negative as well, it was just a discussion.
So if you can see through at night, or like from the inside out, you can see, but not?
From the outside in, you can see at night with the lights on inside.
They are similar.
It's like that material that'll go on the buses for advertisements.
Yeah, during the day, you can see out, I think the other thing we were concerned about was privacy of my patients. A HIPAA violations in a medical facility. Privacy is big, so during the day, you really can't see in, but we can see out. At night, where the police would be able to see inside if there were evildoers, if you want.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to ask, there were four eyes and two nays. Can you express what the nays were about or what there's?
There was a small assumption that these were gonna be LCD or LED screens on one of those boats. The other nae, I don't know the exact justification behind that vote.
I do have a question for Dr. Foster. In the minutes and the notes in your presentation, it says it would allow you to comply with HIPAA laws. I know many doctors' offices that don't block out windows, so I'm wondering which HIPAA law? How does this specifically help you comply with a HIPAA law that may not be in compliance right now?
Well, we're in compliance, I was.
Okay.
But, uh.
That's good to know.
This does add to the privacy for our patients, too. And my office is not set up like a typical medical office, your medical office coming is usually a large area where you can't visualize anything else on the inside other than the people checking in. With me, you can look through the window, you can see straight down to our physical therapy areas, see my people coming in to be adjusted. And we do have a front desk, but also an open alleyway, which actually has, adds to the privacy with the picture.
Yeah, excellent. And no assumption that you were not within HIPAA law, I'm just wondering how this helped, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are you guys prepared to vote? I entertain a ordinance, the approval of ordinance 22-02, an ordinance varying the requirements for the village's, uh, community graphic regulations for a window sign for the property located at 184 South State Street.
So move.
Second.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion?
I have one question for Mr. Hedges or Mr. Ray. Has any other of the downtown businesses applied for variances in the past for something similar? And if so, what were those votes?
That's my knowledge.
Okay, so this is the first of this type.
Okay. Or backup, I mean, I haven't seen it in eight years.
Okay. I just didn't know if we had a, set a precedent, that's why I was asking.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Guy.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paulstein.
Hi.
Ms. Voter.
No.
Motion. For yes, or no, or yes.
We don't need a majority for something like this, or, uh.
It is a majority.
I don't know what I'm saying.
Don't need a super majority.
Super majority, that's the terminology I was looking for. Because I would have had to vote if it was a case. Okay, my favorite part.
Congratulations.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for sitting with us.
Yeah.
With that, Josh will go through the building report.
An agenda supplement has been added to your packet, it's got the monthly metrics reported, provided, as well as the regular charts that are always in there. The number of total permits issued is a little down from the average this fiscal year, which is expected in January. New home permits is surprisingly up, though, we've got 16 home permits in January compared to 4.3 on average. Plan review time continues to be solid at 2.2 days. And the only note that I made in there is that the collecting fees are a little bit high this month because we have a new commercial building project at BEK again, there's some office space on it as a need. And those commercial fees tend to, and we, uh, add to that higher than average. Happy to entertain any questions about the numbers or the graphs.
How do you get a .8?
It's just an average. It's a mathematical calculation, is that where you're, 37.8, is that where you're looking at? Yeah, it's just a mathematical calculation of total permits divided by number of months.
Okay.
That's average per month?
Right.
Thank you. When you don't know what the devising is, it's really.
Yeah, I could put, I could put a 22 monthly average.
Then, yeah, now it all makes sense. Thank you.
Any questions about that? Tell me, would you like to cover both first?
You guys have it all in your packet? If you look at the first section, every time you see replaced in house, it's thousands saved. So the, uh, the public works got some pretty hot shot mechanics. Other than that, they're doing a great job. Other than the 2003. It's, uh, it's duct taped, got a whole bunch of Saint Christopher's up in the dash. Open it makes the year.
We're gonna be hanging to you all soon, in the next couple of weeks, asking to commit to a plow 18 months, 18 monthly time. We're telling us for plows, so we're gonna be coming to you soon for a, for a future project.
I'm assuming you know the answer to this, but all the new plows we just bought are sitting outside, right? There is no place to.
No, there's a, there's two, two inside, or, or?
There's four inside.
Four do stay inside, okay, so the, the 03 was outside, but we do have space right now for some of the equipment to be indoors.
Four of the nine are inside.
Four of the nine.
Why don't we have so many things break this, I mean, it's just because we're overusing, you know, or? I'm just concerned with.
Look at the year of the vehicle.
I see a 2020 plow, um, hydraulic line burst, and that's why I was concerned.
Most, most of those on the new ones are some kind of a design flaw.
Okay.
But on the older vehicles, the 2003s, you know, and the plows are on the ground, and you've, you've heard them. You've seen the sparks, they take a tremendous beating. After a while, they're, they're, they're past their life. But on the 2020, there's been a few other things over there that are design flaws that they fixed prior to breaking. Because of all the villages that, that have the same vehicle, they'll find out some low down, a hose in the wrong place or something that's not right. And so some of the things they can fix before it breaks. And some of them, like, can't.
Can you clarify my understanding, too? Because I, I think what you said was powerful, that everything that's fixed in-house saves us thousands of dollars, right? We don't have, like, a dedicated mechanic, this is somebody who's doing dual duty as a mechanic, but also a streets plowing, or, right, they're, they're like going above and beyond their.
There's four, five, five or six that, that are under the trucks twisting wrenches. And when they're done, they hop in the truck and they go out.
But I mean, no, it's not, I mean, these are, these are people that are going above and beyond, but our duty of that job is to make sure that they're fixing.
Yeah.
That's incredible.
And we actually talked this week about someday we'll get to the point where we can hire full-time mechanics, and at that point, we'll probably start servicing our own police vehicles at some point. That'll be kind of a problem.
Trustee Coe, I have just, just another question, just because I don't know, and this is my first winter here. With the salt and stuff that we ordered, another 400 tons of it, and then I know I saw for the, uh, the liquid that we put on the roads, too, do we order that, like, just monthly, or like, with the salt, we had a huge?
The salt is a state bid.
Right.
So for us to get the pricing, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, they have to order, they have to order so many tons per year? But they're not gonna get it all at once.
That's.
So when you start running low, they call, and it could be tomorrow, or it could be next month. They have no guarantee, city Chicago and all the states takes precedence over everybody else.
But is it paid for already then, because we, we ordered it, so it's just, it's being held somewhere else?
No, it, it's being shipped to IDOT or the state, the state yards to use first. After their fault, then it starts going out to all the other municipalities.
Okay.
We don't pay until we take delivery.
Oh, okay, okay, that's one.
We're obligated to the contract, but we don't pay until we can.
Then looking at, like, I mean, because we did, we used a lot of tons of, um, of salt and stuff. So that's why I was looking at going, we ordered 400, and we used 58 on one and 100 something on another. I just wanna, just to see if we're kind of on target. You never know with how much snow we're gonna get, but I was just curious.
Well, each truck holds 10, 10 tons of salt, right?
Yeah.
So on their route, they might use three or four loads, depending on what, what, what the weather is. That's 40 tons of truck. You got eight trucks?
Nine, nine routes.
Well, the baby, the.
The little ones, a little less capacity.
So you're looking at 3, 400 yard, or 300, 3 to 400 ton every event.
Is the, uh, the pre-wet, then, is, do we have that someplace on site here?
Yeah, we have a tank, a big tank.
So we got the, I mean, we got the majority of that, like, you said the salt was coming in, but with the.
Well, the pre-wet, they have, they have to get filled occasionally. I mean, that, it's a, it's a stray on liquid, so.
Thank you, it's my first winter, so these are just questions that I'm, yeah. I appreciate you asking them.
But the, but the tonnage, we might pay for it when we take delivery.
Okay.
But, you know, we have to guarantee them we're buying whatever the tonnage is, we, we, we have to have that.
Okay.
And whenever they ship it, is we'll get it, we'll get it in August. I've seen it in August and July.
So we've already said how much we want, and then little by little, we get it, and then we pay for it.
There's a minimum.
And then, to, to trustee Coe's point, I mean, it'll show up in August, and then the guy just really wants our reasons.
Okay, okay, thank you. Appreciate it, trustee.
But we got, I mean, that's a little, yes, obviously, but, but what I'm saying is, is then we have to store it all summer long, whether we use it or not, so we've had it where we had really light winters and not used it, and then we still get some places with salt because we committed to it because the previous year is a loss.
Okay.
Okay, so now we have a December water loss report.
Yes, so we tell these supervisors, Mark Montgomery, and the finance department helps put these numbers together. This billing cycle, which is over the course of a few months, we produced about 40,000, or 40 million, 500,000 gallons, billed for just over 32 million of that. So that brings our water loss to 21% this billing cycle. That is the lowest that it's been, as you can see on the, on the charts there. And, uh, Mark Montgomery did say that they are very encouraged by the consistency between the last two billing cycles that they feel like they have, you know, dealt with the major leaks and that, um, the big projects will be, will be done for now, or for now, at least, till something else breaks.
Maybe a little, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I was just gonna say that now we'll be looking towards, you know, smaller sources of loss, um, and, you know, individual water meters and smaller leaks and that sort of thing to keep reducing that percentage of loss.
A little background on this also for the new board members, we do, um, a leak detection, uh, study. Used to be done, I think, about every three to five years, we've been doing it every year now, we plan to do it every year. It costs about $11,000. Uh, but this year, we identified several leaks, and Mark has now repaired all those leaks. We had a really major leak up in Lakewood, if you recall. Took several weeks to figure out how to fix it. Um, and we can see that impact of that right away. So some of these spikes, we know exactly what the events are, we've now, I think, fixed five of those repairs. So the major repairs, and some of them are small enough that it's not going to be expensive to dig it up. I would say that a benchmark, really, an industry standard benchmark should be about 10%. That's what our ultimate goal should be. And our goal right now is 18%, and we're making progress.
Does the village eat that, then? I mean, we have to pay for the water?
Well, it's the cost of, it's the cost of treating the water, really, you know, the water is free out of the ground. We don't wanna, we don't wanna waste that water by any means, um, but the water, the expense is in the treatment.
Okay.
And there are other places where we lose water in the treatment process besides just leaks in the lines. So at another time, we can give you a lot more detail, in fact, we're working with Mark to kind of expand our leak, our, our water loss efforts. The same water in other places, so. One factor when you have, whether it's air or water, it's pressurized, the higher the pressure, the more you're gonna lose. So if we can reduce the system pressure in certain areas or balance the system pressure, then that will keep, that will reduce our leak our leak losses, losses. So the cost, I don't know, we do it at the dollar, calculation?
Not having the report, I think last, then you and Mark Montgomery said it was about 44 cents per thousand gallons, but he wasn't, he said that was a really rough and dirty number, so he wasn't prepared to report it.
We're gonna take this report to another level, though, and kind of identify just this, what we've been looking at so far is just the leaks in the system and repairing those, so that's the low hanging fruit. Um, so now we'll start to look at the, uh, other factors that contribute to what, to the water loss report, it's not really, yeah. So we'll, we'll be giving you more details and other ways that we're gonna attack that.
I mean, 58%, I mean, wow. Um, so, and I see that we've come down from there, and that was in, you know, 2018. Um, and so 21% is a huge difference and stuff, but, I mean, still, it's 21%.
Another big factor is, is meters, in fact, Mark identified, uh, Eljoloi is, I can't remember, a million gallons a month, something like that. They're the largest water user, and that commercial meter was about 30 years old. And if you read any studies, they'll tell you that we didn't really have a lifetime of about 20, 25 years after that, they, they never, if you ever have a complaint to you, they will never overcount water, it's just not physically possible for a meter to overcount water. They will always undercount. So the older they get, the more they undercount, water passes by without being metersed. And I've forgotten the numbers exactly now, but when we changed that at Eljoloi, their water bill just spiked way up right away in our water loss report. So that's also true for residential meters. Um, but you have to look at the payback, because those meters get really expensive when you start replacing 2,700 meters. So right now, we start with the commercial meters, the one that have the, the major users, and we've replaced four or five meters now. It's had a big impact as well.
It's also, I keep the, the powerful statement, it, it is that you hear people upset about the price of the water in their homes, and they suggest that there's a problem with the water meters. Mr. Hedges' point is also, it's crucial to remember, there's no physical way for the Ohio meter to. Like, I'm, there's not, it's not outside the realm of absolute possibility, right? Because we've all seen weird things, right? But it's, but it is like 99% proven, you cannot over, a, a bad meter will overcome water. So it's just something to keep in mind if you get stopped on the street because somebody's water goes.
Good to know.
I get to spend a little time in the water bill side, they have a leak inside, and it's usually a toilet that's running. They can't hear it because it doesn't run all the time, so we just call a plumber, then magically, when they replace the guts of the toilet, the water goes down.
I have a question for you, um, I know that we're looking into connecting. Parts that we're looking into connecting parts of our systems, and you did mention that, you know, the higher the pressure within the system, the, the power that is, and the more leaks that creates. Um, will that connection reduce the pressure? What's our guess?
First of all, I want to clarify what I said, um, the higher the pressure, the more leak you'll get, the more water that will leak through a leak. It won't necessarily create a leak, it could, it could create a point of weakness in your system. Um, and I can't really answer that question specifically. Did you ask me whether it would reduce the pressure? Um, I would say probably not, because we'll actually be moving water further, we'll be moving water at the current tanks, farm tank, up to, up north, so we'll probably have to, there'll probably be a boost. So you'll probably be increasing the pressure rather than reducing it. But we can balance the pressure once, once it gets up.
Any other questions about the water loss report? Is an account payable, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm waiting for a motion. Hey, we would ask for a motion to approve the February 3rd, 2022 regular cost pair, thank you, Mr. Ray.
Anybody have any questions about this large amount?
I do have page 10.
Page 10.
Sign a ramp, new sign, that's the replacement one down on 72. Do we ever put any of that out for bid, or is it too small to throw it out?
Uh, we did not bid that particular one. They had all of our artwork and everything, and they just signed it in this room, so it was really easy to do that, and that was, Laura can give you the details, but that was paid for by insurance.
That's fine.
For the most part.
Ms. Clerk?
This is half of my way to home, too.
Yeah. Also, tell me that this is the first, this is the first half payment, 50% on delivery, another 30% 30 days ago.
You guys haven't seen this, the new sign? It's beautiful. And it's out there, it was installed earlier this week, so that 72 inch, in the garage.
Very nice.
And it's with the updated logo.
Okay.
So it looks cool. And someday, we can maybe update the rest of the other ones to look like, uh, in the budget to do it that.
On the, on the insurance, we actually got somebody that hit it, yeah, well, he was our insurance.
Yeah, so, um, the individual that caused the accident crashed into a car that then proceeded and hit our sign. So, um, the actual impact, um, was not the insured, the party that had to pay. Um, unfortunately, it was a situation where that car, um, had minimal coverage. And so therefore, normally, I take care of all these things by, you know, ourselves, so we don't have to involve the insurance company, but we did this time, um, in the sense that, uh, um, they did subrogate, but, uh, the percentage that we got was, or that they will recover is very small because, um, of the well coverage level and the fact that the car that actually hit the sign, I believe, was an Acura, so it was very expensive to fix that car. So it's kind of done on a proportional basis, if you know what I mean? There was subrogation, though.
Any other questions?
Yep, um, page 6, and it's just because I don't know what the, what a DWTP is, but for incredible builders and the siding replacement. So I'm just trying to figure out which area was, and was that because of all the high winds that we had?
So the drinking water treatment plant, DWTP, um, up on Harmony Road, has had issues with the siding since the get-go. It is a Hardyboard type of siding, and, um, I can't remember exactly, it was built like in 2008, let's say, it literally fell off the building the first time around. And, um, so the village, um, was involved in a hustle, if you will, with Certainty, the manufacturer of the siding. And they proved that the, um, installation was done improperly with the wrong fasteners. So anyway, it got replaced one time, and it's been a nightmare on a continuing basis again. So this is the south facade, um, you know, like, kind of facing towards the cemetery, if you will, or towards town. That was, that was replaced.
So we just on a regular basis replace that?
Well, multiple times, it's, I mean, eventually, the entire building will have to be done, um, it's, it's just a bad situation.
I think as Laura pointed out, not routinely, this is a, this is an exception, a very unusual case, where we had bad installation, bad material, and now we're finally, like, well, I'm doing it right.
Okay, doing it right.
12 years later.
Okay.
We replaced it with vinyl siding this time, which, you know, we're hoping is gonna stay on. And so it, eventually, I think, we'll probably have to make our way around the building.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, um, a few years ago, the, the roof was damaged by a storm, so that has been replaced, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, uh, page 11, Hampshire Township, place suburban bus for $2,800, $2,300, name and address.
Yes, so, um, the village. Yes, so the village participates in a program with the township where riders that are disabled are allowed to ride. It's a dialer ride program, so they dial up pace, and pace will come and pick them up, take them to ECC to the to the program there, and then return them home. They pay a small fare, and then the village pays the unsubsidized piece for Hampshire residents. So there's currently only one rider, happens to be a Hampshire resident, so the village pays the unsubsidized piece.
Is that a yearly cost?
It is a annual cost, yes.
Thank you.
This is due to an intergovernmental agreement between township and village.
And then then the township would pay a portion of that as well?
Um, no. In this case, if there was another individual that resided outside of the village but in the township, then they would pay.
Okay.
I have one last question. I promise that's my last one. Page eight. Just Nycor, and Nycor, I mean, we're hearing everybody complaining about the gas bills and how much they increased and soared. Is that the cost to heat the buildings that we have in the village, that total cost for one month?
Um, so yes. And no. Some of the village buildings, the the gas here at Village Hall, the gas at the police department, and and the gas at the house down on South State Street. Those are all what we call ordinance consideration. So we are allowed so many terms each winter, and so we do not pay for gas. These particular bills, if you've noticed, some start with thirty, some start with thirty one. The thirties are for water treat or for water facilities, and then the thirty ones are at the water treatment plant. So yeah, that's.
So one was six thousand two hundred and sixty dollars?
Yeah, that that's going to be the treatment plants up at, well, drinking water treatment plant, well, ten thirteen, that giant building with the siding issue.
Okay, is that about the average? I mean, from years past?
Um, it it is higher because of the cost of of gas. I mean, I don't have the exact figure, but I'd certainly get those for you.
I'm just curious, because I mean, that's a that is a huge amount of money, and I understand if we're having problems with the building.
I well, I didn't mean to say that that it was leaking, you know, like air.
The siding is falling off.
Right. The insulation is still there.
Okay, okay.
We can check the quantity of the terms used last year versus this year to see if there's a big difference. It could also just be the cold weather. The crime work.
Yeah, and I mean, I understand. I mean, we've had huge windstorms, we've had all kinds of stuff and really cold weather. But I would just be curious. I mean, and truly, it's just curiosity. Six thousand two hundred and six is huge. So I mean, if we were paying three thousand last year, and it's doubled, you know, maybe you should look a little deeper into that.
We'll get you something.
You'll notice just above that, a couple of lines above it, there's Mid American Energy Services, which does participate in a cooperative program with the McCamry, what is it called? We belong basically to a consortium that purchases electrical stuff, so that that's actually electricity up there.
Okay. Is the twelve thousand and seventy nine that is saying?
That's cooperating the drink or the wastewater treatment plant, which is really expensive.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the last question?
That's mine.
Are I want to pay a motion to approve the accounts payable for February third, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing done this quick, we please call it all.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paulsding.
Hi.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
Question pass by.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hedges. Business Development Commission, Mr. Kelly.
The B D C will be meeting next week for our monthly meeting. And outside of that, I believe, Mr. Hedges, you and Chairman Krajewski just presented for the chamber. It looks like you may be presenting again. Do you want to speak to that?
I don't.
Or like what?
We're presenting again. I don't know about it, but.
I saw someone with the chamber of a lunch coming up, showing that you and.
Now, that was yesterday, actually. It was breakfast yesterday.
No, no, I got another one posted.
Another one posted about it.
A lunch coming up as well with you and Chairman Krajewski, so.
Either be a mistake, or they haven't let us know yet, so. But we're always happy to. Yeah, we both spoke. I spoke for a couple of minutes just about development projects, and then then Chairman Krajewski actually talked more about scope and and mission and a little bit about strategies that are timely right now.
Excellent.
We had a pretty good turnout, given the weather.
The pictures look like it was good. They were posted on Facebook.
Yeah, you guys, I guess, are speaking, and it says according to their invite at eleven thirty on February sixteen, so you might want to.
It might be a typo. I'll have to say something. Janie, because I don't think she plans on having the same program two meetings in a row.
Okay. Well, thank you for for representing and for Chairman Krajewski for the B D C. Any questions for me?
Public relations.
We met on January twenty seventh. We entertained a presentation. I don't know how much I can.
Oh, you can talk.
Okay, well, the minutes haven't been published yet, so we entertained a presentation from a company that would like to help us increase village communication. Listened to their presentation. We set our priorities for twenty twenty two and identified our budget priorities and requests that we'll be bringing to the budget meeting.
Okay, Mr. Cole.
The only other thing I got other than your report is I noticed that the combination back home, it takes about forty minutes to load each truck, ran the entire month with no breakdowns.
I'll need that rubber tire and over after all.
You shouldn't have said that, because that was the ball.
Ms. Paulsding.
Just a reminder, keep February twenty third open. That's the budget committee meeting. If you would like to sit in and listen to presentation.
I looked for the answer to the question you asked about the signs. You want to talk about it, but it's not.
Okay, and are we ready to move on to new business?
Absolutely.
All right, then I'd like to ask then, nineteen eighty five, the mayor says is the last time that that ordinance was done for the window coverage. And I'm just curious if if that is something that we need to address as to even keeping. It's kind of silly because we have so many businesses that have that type of vinyl on their windows. And so as not to bother the businesses with having to come in and get a variance. I mean, unless someone says it's really important to keep it. I'd love to see if other villages don't have it in their ordinances and have removed it.
Josh has some comments on it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt that level of detail like I did to the planning zoning commission, but I did look, check, I believe, eight or maybe ten other communities in the area, and I think East Dundee is the only one that doesn't have this type of restriction. In fact, several other communities limit it to only forty percent. So I did check that before the planning zoning commission, just to see if we were the the one off, but it seems to be that we are consistent with other communities in the area right now.
But that doesn't mean you have to be.
Yeah, absolutely.
But 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 the board is the one that makes the ultimate decision. So do you really think we should give up the 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 boards look at downtown? If you let them freewill it down there, you might have some gaudy signs you're going to regret. This way, they all have to come here to him, then to here, and we can keep it uniform, so it's not crazy.
We have, I mean, because I know in like looking at it, we had a visual of what it was going to look and what he was putting on it. Is that what has to be presented for each variance? They actually have to show what you're putting on there, and that's part of what gets approved?
As an elected official, I would I would kind of like to think that we all would want that, so you're not driving through town and seeing something that looks just absolutely bizarre. And now you've got people driving through laughing, or poking fun at us, or asking, you know, why'd you allow that? We we have control over how it looks.
So planning can actually say, and someone can turn around and say, that's, we don't like the look of that. Could you revise it?
Technically, technically, you can always speak to the percentage of the window that's covered.
Okay.
You vote as you choose to vote.
Okay. All right.
Any other new business? Or announcements?
One announcement. Okay. February twenty fourth, just to invite the board and anybody here for the Hampshire Historical Society is having a program. The history of the fire department of Hampshire, and it's going to be over at the fire department. I actually have the book that they printed when there was at the eightieth anniversary of the fire department, which is a really interesting book to read. And so this presentation is going to have, I think, apple cider and hot cocoa. So encouraging the trustees and the members present to attend. So February twenty fourth at the fire department, seven P M.
Okay. Perfect. Anything else? The exact date of session? No? Entertainer motion to adjourn. Questions or comments? Ms. Claire.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Ms. Paulsding.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
Ms. Cole.
Hi.